The Bristol Board of Education. Maintaining a safe and secure learning environment for all students.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the October 3rd, 2018 Board of Education meeting. Before I start this evening, I'd like everybody to be aware that we do have a public comment portion of our agenda, and there's a sign up sheet on my right, your left, on the table over there. If you would like to sign up, we'd ask that you sign up, and then you'll come to the podium and address your comments, and you'll address them to the chairman. We will try to answer any simple questions you might have, but if it's a more detailed question, the administration will get back to you at a later time. We ask that if it's a personnel-oriented question, that you'd be very cognizant that we'd have to be limited in our speaking about personnel issues. So I would like us all to rise for the pledge, and then immediately after the pledge, we're going to have the National Anthem, and it's going to be sung by the harmonizers from Chippenes, and this happens to be the 25th year anniversary year that we're celebrating, and the director has been there for the 25 years, and we'd really like to give her some recognition. I happen to be talking to my daughter, who was one of the first students of the first class that graduated from Chippenes, and she noted to me the other night, she was at the ceremony you had, and she said that Mrs. La Maglio looks the same today as she did 25 years ago. So we'll start with the pledge first. The flag is right here. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under one, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
(Singing) Oh, say can you see why the dawn's early light, what so proudly we hailed, and the twilight's last gleaming, whose bright stripes and bright stars grew perilous flights, for the ramparts we watched were so gallant we shrieking, and the rocket's red glare that was bursting in air gave proof through the night that our flag was still there. Oh, say does that star-spangled banner yet wave o'er the land of the free and the home of the brave and the brave.
Thank you, Mrs. La Maglio and the harmonizers. Thank you for sharing that gift with us. Our next item on the agenda is a moment of silence, and we have two remembrances this month. Thomas Johnson was custodian at Green Hills and Chippenes Hill from January of 1990 through November of 2006, and we have Ruth Pader, who was a special education teacher, from September 6th of '83 to June 30th of '17. Please pause with me. Our next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes. All the board members have received these in their packets over the weekend, so is there any changes or corrections or additions to the minutes? Yes?
It has me as being here, and I was not.
Are there any other corrections to the minutes? If not, I think you're ready to vote. All in favor, say aye. Opposed?
We didn't have a motion.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Moved to exempt.
Okay, moved to exempt. We have a motion, it's been properly made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed and abstentions. As you know, we all met just two weeks ago, so we did not have a lot of committee meetings in the intervening two weeks, but the one committee, the hard-working committee, did meet, and that's student achievement, and Commissioner Doobie will fill us in on their meeting.
Wonderful. So we met on September 19th, and we did have a very robust meeting. We met our new Fine Art supervisor, and we got to welcome Samantha Sarley to the district. We had a middle school humanities update, which just filled us in on what has been happening from last year to present in terms of religious studies going on with that, and we discussed the SAT Achievement 2018 Report. One final thing that we did add to the agenda that night was we discussed the middle school schedule mainly being Chippenes Hill and the pilot study that we're doing with adding grade six to have all of the electives, and we are still doing some research and study on that, and we will give you more details as they come. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And our next item is for our student representatives to speak, and I think our first one up is Logan Zadon from Bristol Central.
Eastern.
Eastern. That's like a sin saying that, I apologize.
You're fine. Good evening, Dr. Moreau, Dr. Carbone, Dr. Galloway, and commissioners. The first thing I would like to talk to everyone about is the opioid presentation by Police Chief Gold to our freshman class that took place on September 27th. As pills have become an essential part of our lives to alleviate pain, we need to pay more attention to what pills we are taking. The major one that many of us have heard of is opioids. They are very addictive and have created the opioid crisis America faces today. Once you put your hand on that pill, you are putting yourself into the risk of getting addicted. We need to be fully aware of their addictive nature and to avoid them as much as possible. This presentation was very informative to the freshmen about the dangers of opioids and how they can really affect your life. The more people that are educated about opioids could lead to the fewer cases that involve the opioid crisis in the future. Another thing that has come to my attention is the lack of advertising about the ACT. At Bristol Eastern High School, we do a great job with making sure everyone, especially juniors and seniors, are informed about all SAT testing dates and where to take them. On the other hand, the ACT hasn't been advertised like the SAT, so students wanting to venture off to college on the West Coast are stranded trying to find out information about the test. Since SAT is more for the East Coast, we tend not to think of the ACT, but some seniors want to go off to the West Coast states. Those seniors have said that they've had to do a lot of research by themselves on testing day information. Even if it's just a small number of students taking the test, every student's future matters, so for those West Coast-bound students, I'm asking you to advertise the ACT and consider holding a testing day for it, or letting those students know about other schools providing the test. Senior years already stressful enough, so please, let's make it easier on them. My last topic of the night is school safety. Every day when a parent says goodbye to their child, they expect a hello when they come home, but some parents won't ever hear those words again. On May 25th, 2018, CNN published an article stating, "We are 21 weeks into 2018, and there have already been 23 school shootings where someone was hurt or killed." That averages out to more than one shooting a week. And as the days go on, there's still a huge risk for another one to happen, and no one knows where. Ever since the Parkland shooting at Douglas Stoneman High School in Florida, the Santa Fe High School shooting in Santa Fe, Texas, and the Sandy Hook Elementary School shooting, which happened in Newtown, only 44 minutes away from Bristol, these and many other school shootings have raised concerns about the safety of students. Recently, I sent out an anonymous survey for Bristol Eastern faculty and students to take. The two questions they had to answer were, "Is Bristol Eastern High School safe, yes or no?", and "What do you suggest to improve the safety of Bristol Eastern High School?" The majority of them said it was safe, but there was still a small percentage of faculty and students who felt unsafe. Some suggestions they had were that we should have student ID with our picture on it and grade or grad year, so we can make sure that there are no people who are not students coming into the building unnoticed. Our lockdown procedures do not seem like the best plan we can come up with. Students and teachers are to sit in one corner of the classroom, fully exposed if someone were to open the unlocked door or to look through the window. We at least used to be able to cover windows, and now we are told we cannot have them covered at all. Teachers have gone through Governance Council to suggestions for additional door locks for added safety, another way of an intruder not being able to get into the classroom. These locks were cheap and easy to use. Many school districts and even preschools use them. Some of the ideas of the locks, teachers don't even have to have up all the time and can just be put in place in case of a drill or emergency. We have absolutely no obstacle for an intruder to get into the classroom except one lock on a door, not even a doorstop under the door. Students are not even trained to at least turn their desks for a shield or et cetera. I have heard of other districts having many other safety procedures in place in the event of a lockdown. Another suggestion is walkie-talkies in each hallway. Another one is, there are situations with the very few students who have, wait, what? Very few students who have, who are likely not be able to self-monitor that led me to feel that not everyone understands why we must follow protocols, like not laying them back into the classes where they have issues with teachers and students. I have been present when students run into other students, et cetera, and it feels like they were just let back into the classroom or not monitored in ISS since they were walking around. Since we are not new to kids like this in our school, we need to understand better how dangerous to themselves and others they can be when not kept re-geamed and no matter how kind they seem after the fact. We lack the training to do this effectively, and this scares me. The last suggestion is to ensure the mental health of all students. These responses provide a better understanding of what we can do as a school to make it safer. We should consider student IDs, secure door locks, walkie-talkies, better protocol in ISS, and more training for teachers with troubled students, and making sure everyone is mentally okay. With all of these, we can make more students at Bristol Eastern High School feel safe and have them be able to go home at the end of the day to say hello to their parents. Thank you.
Thank you, Logan. Are you both speaking? Okay.
Good evening. My name is Catherine Fung, the junior representative for Bristol Central. I'm very excited to speak this evening and tell you about this month so far at BC. Bristol Central has PSATs and SATs coming up, with seniors able to take SATs this Saturday, October 6th. Next Wednesday, October 10th, all students will be able to take PSATs. With the new cellphone policy in place to increase student learning, I'm hoping to use these scores as a comparison from last year to see what improvements have been made as a result of the cellphone policy. I will contact Mr. Winichir to see what I can do about getting the scores, and come back next meeting with further information. Conferences will follow in the week after, the 16th to the 18th, and many students are looking to attend. Bristol Central has had few events for the upperclassmen who are choosing to go to college after high school. A college fair was September 24th, and over 80 colleges were there for students to see. Monday, October 1st, was a financial aid night for both students and parents. Many colleges have already come to Bristol Central for representative visits, such as St. Anselm College, University of St. Joseph, and Mitchell College. Our Avid program was able to welcome Dr. Moreau, Dr. Carbone, and Ms. Fortin to discuss the Avid program on September 27th. Students looked forward to meeting the people who are so involved in Bristol. Advisories have introduced the Sandy Hook Promise to students, and the school will be participating in the Start with Hello program. Everyone is encouraged to reach out to others around the school and make new friends. This program will really help BC grow closer as a family. Teachers began submitting requests for grants through DonorsChoose.org, and funding has come instantaneously. All teachers were encouraged by Ms. Gallow to create projects that will help students in classrooms. Many teachers requested funding for things like school supplies and materials that help improve focus in the classroom. Some asked for standing desks, desks, and comfortable chairs that will allow students who fidget or have trouble paying attention to really engage in the classroom. Others asked for technology like Chromebooks that help involve kids in current events and expand from what the average textbook concludes. Sports at BC have been doing well. Football, soccer, girls swim, and cross-country have all had games or meets. Some sports are also getting involved in the community. Soccer Girls made a basket to be sold in a raffle to support breast cancer awareness during the month of October. The cross-country team is volunteering at Edgewood Family Fun Night on October 26th. This school year is just beginning, and there are already so many things happening. I was excited to report tonight, and I know Bristol Central have a great year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ashley, I see a paper on your lap, but you're not speaking? Okay, thank you. I do want to, I reminded you personally, but I want to remind you publicly that CAPE on their convention on November 17th has a student representative panel on that Saturday morning, and I encourage you all, if you're able to make it, with your work schedules and all, to make it down there. I think it'd be a very beneficial experience for you, a meeting with all students all across the state.
And you can get details from this separate.
At this time, I will start with my report. I've spoken to you ad nauseam about the CAPE convention, so I will try to not speak too much about that. I think you're all who are intending to go, are signed up to go. I will remind you all that if you're intending to stay over on that Friday night, that the room block ends on October 17th, and the room block is at $153 a night. And just for the public's information, the board members pay for their own housing, the city or the Board of Education does not pay for that. The board members do it out of their own dedication to the board. It just makes travel a little bit easier when meetings end at 9:00 or 10:00 at night, and then to get back for 8:30 the next morning, board members stay over. I'd also like to mention that there was a legal issues forum that was coming up for the end of October, and that has been postponed till November 7th. There were some scheduling conflicts in October, and that topic's for that, and it's good continuing education for board members if you're able to attend. It's special education, it's MBR, it's the Janus versus Astme case, the implications for boards of education as to what impact that might have on boards of education, as well as other topical legal and law issues related to education that might be to your benefit. So you may watch that pamphlet when it comes out, it'll be for November 7th. And I would like at this time to change topics and talk about the Business Ed Foundation. There is a meeting tomorrow morning at 8:00 sharp, if you're really interested in getting up early and having fun. But we would like Sarah Mitchell, who is our coordinator, to speak a little bit about the foundation and upcoming event that she's excited about.
Thank you all for having me this evening. My name is Sarah Mitchell, the Community Communications Coordinator for the district and also the liaison to the Business Education Foundation. The Business Education Foundation is a 501(c)(3) nonprofit that was founded in 1991 as a collaboration between the Board of Education and the Central Connecticut Chamber of Commerce to support the mission of the Bristol Public Schools. The foundation board is comprised of individuals, businesses, and community members. The foundation supports the innovative programs and initiatives through grants and donations to increase academic achievements within our district and for our students. Some of the programs that the foundation supports are the Caring About People Mentor Program. We have three peer-to-peer programs in the schools in addition to an in-school mentor program with about 150 or so mentors who come in once a week through the whole school year to see our students. The Middle School Robotics Challenge, which is going into its 10th season this year. The middle schools in the district come together the springtime and do a whole challenge. It's really exciting to see. The Wowmobile, the Wonder of Words Literacy Program, which is eight weeks during the summer, travels to various neighborhoods and different schools within the Bristol district, providing free books to the community. And then our most exciting program is our mini-grants. Each year, we give out approximately $15,000 to the Bristol Public School teachers who have innovative programs that are approved through a grants committee. On average, we've given out about $400,000 since 1991 to the Bristol Public Schools. Last year, we were able to award 19 grants to, excuse me, 17 grants were awarded, and this is, the mini-grants is our largest, best-known program that we happen to have. To support our programs that we're able to support, we rely on public donations and financial contributions from the community, as well as grants that the Business Ed Foundation applies for. On October 19th, we are having our second annual Trivia Night fundraiser at the Doubletree. Tickets are $35 per person, which includes dinner. It's open to anybody over the age of 21, and trivia starts at 6:00 PM. We're encouraging teams of up to six participants. If you're a team of one or two, we'd love to have you. We can always find a team willing to bring you on and have some fun. We'll also have a few raffle opportunities taking place that evening as well. There's still plenty of time to register, and you can go to the Central Connecticut Chamber website to register online, click on the Events tab in the calendar, and it will pop right up, or by all means, please contact me at the school, and I can provide any additional information for you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any questions for Sarah while we have her? Thanks a lot, Sarah.
I believe we have some commissioners who've already committed to trivia night. I know we have many of us at central office who plan on going. It's a lot of fun.
We're going to have a little competition between administrators and commissioners.
Little competition.
Okay.
We each have our specialty.
I hope so. I'm trying to find it. The next item on my agenda, our agenda, is board appointments. There is two building committees being begun. One is the roof is being replaced at Stafford, and HVAC system is being replaced at Southside School. And I just thought I'd clarify, a lot of people think these are Board of Education committees, but they're really not. By charter, they're city committees, because the Board of Education doesn't have any capital funds to expend, so the city en panels these committees, these building committees. And so the building committees each have a nominating committee, and the nominating committee consists of a Board of Education member, a Board of Finance member, and a city council member. And so we needed to appoint two people to these two committees, one at Southside Roof Project, and Karen Verbit has agreed to be that Board of Education representative for that, and Karen Hints has been agreed to be the representative for the Stafford School Roof Project. So there was, we're glad to name those two individuals. There was one item that's not on my agenda, and if you'll indulge me a little, I'm going to speak a little bit to it. You all know that I go to the CREC meetings every month, and I'm also involved in the leadership there. And over the last six to eight months, we've been part of a working group talking about the sustainability of the magnet schools, primarily the Chef Magnet Schools. Through legislation, 16 magnet schools were built by the legislature to satisfy the Chef case. For those of you that don't know what the Chef case is, it was an integration order by the court that said that the city of Hartford and the state of Connecticut had to integrate their schools, so one of the solutions was to create these magnet schools. Unfortunately, the sustainability of those magnet schools is at risk. Like many state grants, we don't have a way to build in an escalation, so CREC has not had their per pupil expenditure changed since 2011. That's seven years of increases in health insurance and increases in salaries. And so what was intended to be, the state was going to create 75% of the funding, and the local school districts, whose students would go to these magnet schools, would have the other 25%. That ratio is now down to about 55%, 56% of the state participating, and the local communities are participating in the remainder. And so it makes, in fact, the last two years, in the way the government works, they've chosen to cut the school grant to the magnet schools, and so that had to be made up. So we've been part of this working group, which has included superintendents, it's board members of the CREC council, it's been legislators, and then the CREC staff, trying to find a solution that we could bring to the legislature that we all could get around. There's always been this sort of ill-feeling that CREC was sort of building these schools on their own, and they were this entity on to its own, but it really is a creation of the legislature, and so the legislature has to come up with a solution. So we thought if we came to them with the 35 districts that represent CREC with a solution, then hopefully they would listen. So we have been continuing to have that dialogue. We have not come to a conclusion yet, but we will probably need to soon as the legislature starts in the next session, and so I just wanted you to be aware of those issues. If there isn't a solution, then likely the amount of tuition that school districts pay would have to increase to keep those magnet schools open, increase dramatically.
So that concludes my report, and now we will turn to the superintendent for her report.
Thank you. Good evening, commissioners. I'd like to start out by thanking all of our students, PTAs, POs, and our staff for all of their efforts in the mum parade. In addition to both of our high school bands, we had floats from Edgewood, Southside, West Bristol, Green Hills, and Ivy Drive. A lot of work goes into those, but they also had a lot of fun. I just waved on the sidelines. It was a great, cool day, and I remember last month, one of our student reps talked about how hot it was last year. It was 59 degrees this year. I'm guessing they were really happy to have those full uniforms on. As Chairman Wilson said, Chippenes Hill Middle School just had its 25th anniversary party last week, as well as a retirement party for the head custodian, John Mastriani, who, if you've never been at Chippenes, go up there quickly, because the floors could be eaten off of, they're as shiny as they were the day they were laid down. He and his staff have just done a remarkable job, and I told him he needs to come by at least once a week and make sure that his standards are still being met. And I'm guessing that for quite a while, people will hear his voice in their heads as they're working to keep that building clean. There also were students, as Commissioner mentioned, his daughter was one of them, who was an eighth grader during that first year. There was a time capsule trunk, you know, one of those camp trunks, and they brought it, and all these former students gathered around it, took out one item at a time, and you could just hear them almost sounding like eighth graders, getting very excited over, I think it was a Hello Kitty, which interestingly has, you know, stood the test of time. Maybe some of you don't know what that is, but any of us with daughters know what that is. And they just had such a wonderful time, and it was just a great occasion. All of the administrators, with the exception of one, who've been administrators in that building, were present, had their pictures taken together, including Dr. Carbone. And now there's a display of a tree for everyone who was an administrator, as well as anyone who had 25 years at Chippenes. And so Mrs. La Maglio got to put a picture of herself up on the tree, as did Mr. Mastriani and a couple of other staff members. Very exciting. And so we were at Central signing contracts for Avid students last week. I thought it was interesting you chose that, and I did as well, to talk about. It was very, very rewarding to talk to students who, we didn't all ask the same questions, but basically I was asking, "What has Avid done for you?" And the consensus was that they would not be enrolled in accelerated and AP courses had they not ended up in the Avid program, because they have resources attached to that. They have a tutor who will help students, they have peer tutors who will help one another, and they form a family over the four years. Very exciting stuff, and we were all thrilled to be there to put our signatures on their contracts as well. Tomorrow, I'll be attending the Leading for Equity Institute. It's a CAPS and Center for School Change initiative, and I'm hoping to identify our facilitator for our planning committee for our community conversations at that. And now I'd like to do the first of what will be a monthly occurrence. If you recall, I introduced you to our district priorities, I think in August, and this will be our first update. So one priority is to inspire and cultivate talent. That's making sure that our students learn in as dynamic and passionate a learning environment as they can. So to start that work, we have teachers creating database professional practice objectives. This is, what do I need to learn to better serve my students? ProTrak's online platform training and implementation. ProTrak's online platform training and implementation. This is a, an online container for all the documents that are part of both the teacher and the administrative evaluation program. And leaders will be identifying one of the five Es of planning for student learning as a focus for teacher sharing at faculty meetings, in their instructional improvement teams, and during collaboration time. They're a little small down the side there, but if they wanted to talk about, how am I going to extend student learning, that would be an E, and they might spend a full meeting talking about ways that they could extend learning opportunities for students who maybe already know the content, or go laterally with the content. We're looking to improve, always improve, our organizational operational effectiveness through improving central office and building systems, organizational structures, and to make sure that we have a safe learning environment for our students, which Logan addressed in his remarks. So we have onboarded our new safety director, Javier Rosario, who is a retired East Hartford police officer. He's been visiting all of our schools during a drill, and helping the team to debrief after, and give some suggestions on how they might be improved upon. We also distributed new emergency prepared manuals, and we're gonna be meeting with teams to make sure they understand how to utilize those, and who should receive them, where they should be placed, all of those types of important messages. We're practicing our safety drills, we're expecting at least seven fire drills, and three lockdown, lock-in, evacuation drills, for a total of ten during the year. We've convened our central office crisis intervention team, Dr. Carbone leads that. Ms. Everett and I are members of that as well. It's part of our communication of everyone on that team, when there's any issue of crises, everyone is notified of what's going on, and we have a system for making sure that they know that we've all heard it, so it doesn't fall on deaf ears. And each school is also convening their crisis intervention teams, and particularly meeting with those teams after drills to debrief. In the area of community engagement and partnerships, we're always looking to expand our partnerships. We have grant applications currently into Main Street Community Foundation, the Stocker Foundation, and many for Donors Choose. In addition to the ones that have been written by our high school teachers, we have district teachers always putting items on Donors Choose, and they're getting funded, so it's a great opportunity for them. We're working on planning that community conversation about equity, diversity, and race, and we have implemented shared services in insurance, information technology, and If we're nothing else, we're learner-focused. Students have to be at the center of all of the learning that goes on in our district. So right now, we're enhancing our school climate and culture by re-centering some of the initiatives we've had going, Positive Behavior Intervention and Supports, which is PBIS, restorative consequences, and really getting whole-school buy-in, because if all the teachers in the school do not agree to the principles of whatever system they're going to use, it's not effective. And so, the first couple of months are spent doing that, because we always have new staff members in buildings as well. And implementing student support services, if you recall, during the budget cycle last year, I asked for additional funding for student support specialists and intervention staff. We've put most of those people in place, I think there may be one more outstanding, and our administrators are greatly utilizing that. So it's money very well spent, and hopefully, that will help us to key in on students who have social-emotional issues, and get them the services that they need. And that is the end of my...
We next move to the consent agenda, and that is items 7.1 through 7.2. Does anybody wish to hold out any items? Yes, Commissioner Verbit?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to hold out 7.2.A. Alliance Grant, and 7.2.B. Bristol Adult Education Center, in an effort to get some more information here.
Okay. Okay, so we will hold those two items out, and we'll go ahead and vote for item 7.1, if no one else wants to hold anything out. If not, I would accept the motion for item 7.1 of the consent agenda.
So moved.
Motion is made, do we have a second? Motion's been properly made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I actually had whispered to Commissioner Verbit to pull out the Alliance Grant. I hope to, not surprise the superintendent, but just so that we don't lose our institutional knowledge about the Alliance Grant. Many years ago, when that grant was established, and it was established for the, some of the lower-performing school districts, or the school districts with the lower socioeconomics, and we identified it's one of those school districts, and we didn't get our normal allotment of educational cost-sharing grant, our main grant. And so instead, what they did is they carved out this Alliance Grant, and said, you're gonna have to apply to the state for the programs you're gonna have that are gonna help your school district move forward. So I would, I just wanted the superintendent just to give an...
I'm actually gonna ask Dr. Carbone, but, you know, I have been writing the grant since 2012, and Dr. Carbone had been managing the grant in Hartford, so when she came in...
I'm not looking for a lot of detail, just kind of just an overview, so everybody understands that, you know, we, what kind of things that is doing for us with that $3 million.
So it's $3.6 million. In a city and a staffing level this size, the majority of the monies we use for, to support our literacy efforts in kindergarten, full-day kindergarten. So fifteen kindergarten teachers are funded with the money, 5.75 literacy coaches within the K-3 grade band, as well as two social-emotional learning coordinators, and we're, the addition this year of two mathematics coaches will help complement the efforts of OTL. To crescendo the last slide that Dr. Moreau just presented, we added 9.75 interns to support technology and social skill development, which helped support our PBIS initiatives in social-emotional learning.
Thank you.
I just have a question. PBIS still a pilot program in three schools, or has it been expanded?
So Bristol Public Schools have adopted a framework called Positive Behavioral Supports. Some schools have used PBIS in totality. Some use a mix of PBIS principles and restorative practices. The majority of our schools fall back on PBIS, because it has a set structure, whereas most, many other schools use a mix of the framework of George Seguin's work and restorative approaches and practices. Where we would like our folks to go is a blend of those, because they complement one another.
When you say many?
Many, I would say, we have twelve complete school programs and two additional programs, and of the twelve, I would say seven heavily rely on PBIS as its framework.
How about the adult grant? Could someone just sort of summarize what we do with the resources for the adult ed grant?
The adult ed grant, we're, we, it's an entitlement of sorts. Every town has to have an adult education program, or contract with another town to have a program. And so, we apply for the grant, and we get actually more now than we used to get. We used to get about 50%, 49%, now it's over 54% that we receive from the state, and the rest of it comes from our budget. And this allows for tuition-free programs, for the graduate equivalency diploma, the national diploma, external diploma, right? National, external diploma, and also the credit diploma program.
Okay, thank you. So now, is there any further questions?
No.
Then we would have to vote, I guess technically, we, you want me to go on to new business to adopt these, or can we adopt them now? Will you be upset if we do it now?
No.
Okay, all right. So you would be, okay. So if I could hear a motion to accept 7.2 as a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Second. Motion's been properly made and second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. We now move to public comment. Do we have any public comments? Okay, we will move to deliberated items. And our first item is secondary summer school reports, and I guess, I see someone standing up, so I imagine it's gonna be Carly and not Mr. Covino.
Correct. Mr. Covino and Mr. Everett weren't able to present today, so they asked me to share some information about our secondary summer school program. At the middle level, in the summer of 2018, 42 students took 71 courses through the middle school summer school program. When compared with data from the 2017 summer, we had the same number of students this year, however, we had students requiring fewer courses this summer than those in 2017. At the high school level, 149 students took 212 courses. These numbers are 24 and 28% lower than the numbers from the previous year. As our high schools engage in more strategies to ensure that students are on track toward graduation, earning 5.5 credits in their freshman year, we are seeing fewer students who require summer school. The numbers of students in courses needed in 2018 were the lowest we've seen in the past four years. There were also some changes to the programs this year. The middle school program was redesigned to allow students to take their social studies and science courses online through edgenuity with the guidance of one teacher, and students met with success. A special education teacher was added to the program at the middle school level to help plan with the core teachers, and to guide students who needed individualized support in their middle school language arts and math. The summer school program also hosted nine education interns from CCSU, who provided valuable assistance, working with our students while learning from our academic professionals. Summer school enrollment and success is still dependent upon students registering and attending our classes. A success this year was the number of students who took advantage of our policy that allows students to retake the semester they had failed in the course to regain credit. At the same time, we need to work with our counselors to make students' registration into summer school as seamless as possible, and pre-enrolling students during their exam time at the high schools. Transportation, of course, is another factor that has impacted summer school attendance this year. And I can attempt to answer questions that you have, or I can direct you to Mr. Covino.
Commissioners, we went very quickly through the consent agenda, but I wanted to introduce you to the newly-appointed principal at Hubble School, Christine DeLeo. If you'll stand, please.
Welcome, and welcome to Hubble. I'm sure you'd be glad to have you.
Thank you.
Our next item on our agenda is Connecticut School Day, SAT 2018 board update, and I imagine that's Mrs. Fortin as well. Went to sleep? It's never a good sign when the IT people are getting up.
Robbed to the rescue.
It was there.
Here, it's here, it's just not here.
Oh, okay. Don't want to touch anything.
Okay, so thank you. Full and extensive report, as Commissioner Dubey shared, was presented at Student Achievement Committee in the past month. A full written report is also available to you in E-meeting, but I did want to highlight a few key points of this presentation to the full board this evening. So as you know, the Connecticut School Day SAT is a required state of Connecticut achievement test for all juniors. Student performance on the SAT contributes to two indicators in the Next Generation Accountability System for the state of Connecticut. Indicator one, which represents achievement of students, and indicator six, that represents college and career readiness. Obviously, our students also benefit by being able to take the test as part of the school day, since the SAT is still used widely as a college entrance exam. The state averages for math and critical reading were lower than last year, more so in critical reading, and as you could see from these results, we find that same pattern when we examine our results at the district level. Student performance in the past three years has been variable by test, which is our evidence-based reading and writing, or math and by school. We can see that we can make some predictions about SAT performance based on students' PSAT performance in their freshman year. I want to explain a little bit about how to read this graph. So if we're looking specifically at our Connecticut School Day 2018 results, we're looking at the class of 2019. Those are our seniors this year, and we could see that we have a complete row across there, from PSAT performance in grade nine, all the way through their SAT performance in grade 11. If you see a green shaded box, that means that we've had a higher mean in that year than the year prior. And if you're looking at the colored text, that is where we're meeting the expected growth. The College Board has determined how many points we can expect students to grow between administrations of PSAT, between PSAT as a freshman, PSAT as a sophomore, PSAT as a junior, and then their SAT as a junior as well. And so every time we can see those colored points, we're meeting that expected growth. So what we can tell is when we have a higher PSAT average in students' freshman year, obviously, we're getting to a higher result in the SAT. So our performance has been variable depending upon how prepared students are when they're entering the high school. We do see that in a number of areas, our schools are, our teachers working with students are meeting the growth that's expected between PSAT and SAT administrations. Again, that's the colored text. However, in order for us to really compensate for a group that we might see have a lower PSAT score in their freshman year, we need to even grow beyond that expected level of point growth. So these are the results for math, and we can see the same kind of pattern in our evidence-based reading and writing. Within our analysis, we examined potential achievement gaps for students who are English learners, students who receive specialized instruction, students who are impoverished. We also looked at achievement gaps among ethnicity and gender. We closed the achievement gap in both high schools among our English learner population. However, we have the largest achievement gaps for populations for students who are not yet addressing the regular curriculum as it's written, due to their individualized needs, so students primarily in special education, who are receiving instruction that's individualized to their need, so that they could ultimately access what is our core curriculum. For district comparisons, our full report lists out our district comparisons between students in our district reference group, Alliance, and contiguous towns. We did remain as one of the top performers when comparing our performance on math with districts within the Alliance District, who are similar districts to ours, and we are still in the top half among schools who receive Alliance funding, or are in our district reference group. Also, within our analysis, we looked at specific skills that our students have demonstrated across the evidence-based reading and writing test, and our math test. Evidence-based reading and writing for our areas of strength were students' knowledge of words and context. And among the four sub-tests, we had a greater number of students who scored below standard in their understanding and application of English conventions. In mathematics, we had the greatest number of students who scored goal and problem solving, and at the same time, the greatest number of students who are not yet meeting expectations in that same area. As I shared with our Student Achievement Committee, these results, we believe are directly impacted to the math courses that students are taking, when they're taking the SAT, and what the content and curriculum that they're exposed to within those courses. Eighty percent of our students are meeting or are approaching the standard on cross-test scores in social studies and science. So there are questions in both the evidence-based reading and writing, EBRW test, and math test, that also address science and social studies content, and eighty percent of our students for both of those areas are meeting the standards. And finally... And finally, we also shared at the Student Achievement Committee a very specific action plan for improvement, where we reported on the effectiveness of the strategies we undertook last year and shared new strategies that will be in our plan for this year. There are four targeted areas for improvement: strengthening the foundation within middle school, accelerated achievement while at high school, engaging stakeholders with available, actionable data, and bolstering our special populations. Some of the specific strategies we shared under these areas include developing individualized SAT goal plans with students and involving a broader range of teachers and professional development about the SAT. Happy to answer any questions that you might have.
I don't see any questions, so thank you very much. You must have done a thorough job. We next move to old business. Is there any old business? Thinking none. Is there any new business, since we took care of that other item? There is no new business. We'll move right to informa...
Just wondering if we had any early indications on enrollment, since the October 1st numbers have come and gone.
We thought we'd give you to them because of the way October 1st fell on Monday. We thought we'd give them to you in November this year, but I think Dr. Galloway can maybe give you...
Any surprises?
Well, things have steadied out so far. There were several grade levels at the middle school level we were concerned about, but over the last two weeks or so, things have quietened down. So there's not a lot of movement, not a lot of new registrations at this point.
Overall, is enrollment constant or slightly down?
Slightly down.
But we'll have our full report next month, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're moving on to information, since this end of the room was speaking. I'll start with Commissioner Kelly or Councilman Kelly. Do you have any information you'd like to share with?
I have a report.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien?
Nothing I can share.
Nothing you can share. Commissioner Taylor? Commissioner Viver?
No, thank you.
Commissioner Dubey? Commissioner Joe? Commissioner Karen?
Commissioner Joe?
Okay, well, we'll start on that end for liaison reports. Same? No? Yes? Yes, good.
So I'm here to represent West Bristol, and I will say the school year is off to a great start. The West Bristol community is focusing on positive behavioral supports by developing a solid foundation for what it means to practice the PAWS code. This Friday, the school will hold a school-wide crew meeting for students to recognize students as worthy wolves or those who practice the PAWS code every day. In addition, students enjoyed the NED show, which incorporates ways to be inclusive. Finally, the fall sports are well underway with a high level of student participation.
Thank you. Commissioner Viver?
Not this month.
Commissioner Taylor?
As Dr. Moreau mentioned, Green Hills had a float in the mum parade, and I mention that again only because it was the first time we had a float since the KE was established. So before, when it, you know, the smaller school, there was a float. So it was great because we had parents that were kindergarten parents, we had middle school parents, we had fifth-grade parents, and it was, I don't know, for me, it was the first time as a parent kind of seeing the entire school together with new parents coming together, and it was just a lot of fun to work on that float. And I know a lot of people showed up. Unfortunately, I couldn't be on it, but a lot of people did show up on the float. And though technically I'm not the liaison, the reason why I was running into here so late is because I was working concessions over at Central's and the JV volleyball team just the Eastern, so...
Okay.
And I still smell popcorn, so...
Did you bring us any?
Commissioner O'Brien? Nothing? Commissioner Kelly, Councilman Kelly again?
Yeah, I'd like to share one thing, and I'll get into that at a later date, but Bristol Teacher of the Year, Michael Reynolds. I wanted to get a feel for what made him so special, so I contacted Superintendent's office and got permission to go up and observe his class and speak to his students. And after spending time there, it's obvious to see why he is Bristol Teacher of the Year. He has some very creative, innovative techniques that he uses, and as I said, I'll speak more about that at a later date.
Thank you for taking the time to do that.
Oh, it was my pleasure. It was a great experience.
One last report that I have, as I serve on the Memorial Boulevard intra-district magnet school, creation of that school, and so I thought I'd share with you some of the details of the committee. We have, last month, we selected an architect, and we're still working on finalizing that contract, but fortunately, the architect has begun work even without the contract and was at our meeting and provided some counsel to us. The purchasing department is working on a scope of contract with Eagle Environmental, who is the environmental hygienist that we have decided to hire, and they're working on the scope of that agreement, and that work will commence shortly. And then, just this week, the RFQ, Request for Qualifications, went out for the construction and construction manager. We just went out to bid, so all the contractors came in to walk through the Boulevard, and so those RFQs should be in around October 12th. And so, absent of any other problems, we will get down to, like we did with the architect for highly qualified individuals, and then the committee will pick from those four highly qualified companies, we will pick one. And the superintendent has convened a committee to start exploring in detail the program for the school. When we submitted the application to the Office of School Construction, we sort of gave a broad outline of what we thought the school would be about, but now is the hard work to get committed together to do that work so that when we plan the space for this new school, that it fits the programming that we intend for it. So that's what we're, really, a lot of design work and a lot of planning work in this committee work was what's going to happen over the next year until we actually start doing some real work. There'll be some site work, of course, done, and this environmental work will be done during the course of the next year, but there'll be a lot of planning and designing by the architect, by the construction, by the construction manager. A lot of that planning will begin first before we actually get into the construction. And so if anybody has any other questions...
We met this week, purchasing agent Mr. Russo, Tim Callahan, our project manager, Mrs. Brown, and I, and two of the architects, the project manager and Rusty, and I'm not remembering what his last name is.
Rusty Mal.
Mal, thank you. Just so that they had a better understanding about how the specs have been created, and just some details that needed to come before we convene a full group.
Okay. And one final thing I will say is that the committee was concerned about how do we communicate this to the community, and so one of the ways that we've decided that we communicated is the city has a website, and so we will try to apprise that website with links so that people can follow the progress of the committee. So that concludes my report, and having no other business to come before the board, I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So moved.
Second.
It's been properly made in second. All in favor, say aye. We adjourn.